Okay, folks, we will call the public hearing for the, from the Board of Finance, Public Hearing for the Budget to Order. It is four o'clock and we have all in attendance. First thing I'm gonna do is do a roll call for Board of Finance members and staff who are on the phone. So myself, Tim O'Brien, is here. Glenn Freshman.
Here.
Mike Fauerbach.
I'm here.
Lynn Young.
Here.
Bob Stajin.
Here.
Deb Norman.
Here.
Dave Motherway.
Here.
And then Jill Senior.
Yes, I'm here.
And Jim Sullivan. We have Jim unmuted.
I don't have him muted.
Okay. Jim has signed in, so we know he is online and listening, probably a mute on the phone. Additionally, here at Town Hall, I have the First Selectman Danielle Cheeseborough, as well as Stacy Haskell, who is running everything for us. At this time, I'm gonna ask Stacy to mute all the rest of the microphones, and then I'll be back in one second when we get that squared away to go over procedure for this meeting, so bear with us for one second. And then if people come in, just make sure they're muted. I think they should be on, but...
Oops. I got that wrong.
I've got it, okay, good. Okay, so by our accounts, we have the rest of the participants muted, and we will begin this part of the public hearing. To start with, I just have a couple things I wanted to say, that I'd like to start off this meeting with a quick... This is a completely unprecedented time for Stonington and the U.S. as a whole. We're all trying to be responsible and maintain proper social distancing to keep the number of COVID-19 cases in Stonington and Connecticut to a minimum. This has had a huge impact on many households and businesses. These impacts and changes create a huge uncertainty while trying to develop a fiscally prudent budget for the coming year. While none of us know when life may return to normal, we're all working to protect and support all of Stonington residents as best we can. Reading about how $349 billion recently released for the payroll protection program is being consumed faster than the government anticipated, and the government is trying to work out adding another $250 billion for this program is unsettling. That's a very harsh indicator of how small businesses in the U.S. are struggling. This also reflects what we hear and see locally, as townspeople have struggling businesses and jobs, yet bills that still must be paid. Connecticut Department of Labor is currently running a five-week backlog to process all of the unemployment claims. Casinos closed for the first time ever, and just yesterday Mystic Seaport announced that they are delaying construction a year due to the economy and market uncertainty. This is the backdrop we have while developing this budget. I do think that the town is working hard to be fiscally responsible to the taxpayers. The budget as presented requires hard cuts to be made, and across the board, and ones which reflect the uncertain economy that we are facing. Under the leadership of the First Selectwoman Danielle Cheeseborough, the town is suggesting even more cuts to the proposed budget to try and help residents get through these evolving times. The Board of Education is agreeing to 0% increase in operational budget year over year. This continues to be one of the most difficult budgeting processes to manage as there isn't so much that is, as there is so much that isn't known going forward. We need to consider that any funding the town gets from the state may not come due to the state's fiscal reality, and if that happens, the burden on the town's taxpayers will be considerable. I'm happy that everyone in town government is mindful of the economic uncertainties and is trying to do their part. At the end of the day, it's the taxpayers who fund all this, and who are facing that same uncertainty personally. These are challenging times, no doubt, and we look forward to the future when we're able to safely return to our traditional routines. We're all in this together, and we will persevere. This meeting is the public hearing. This is the opportunity for the public to have their voices heard in support or opposition to the proposed budget. Due to the situation this year, it's virtual, and we have asked that people either submit written comments or request a time to speak. After the deadline passed for submissions or requests, we've received 15 letters and no requests to speak verbally. I will start identifying who wrote the letter, their address, and then read the letters as received. Letters will be entered into the record as received, and copies have already been given to all of the Board of Finance members for their reading. Given that, we will start moving on to the correspondence that we have received. So, the first set of letters that were received were related to Human Services and Outside Agencies. The first letter that I have is from Mark Bancroft of 81 Mary Hill Road, Pawtucket, Connecticut. And he writes, "On behalf of the Stanton Davis Homestead Museum, I'm asking for the funds requested $5,000 and recommended by the First Selectmen to be reinstated. I understand that the town is facing a potential shortfall in taxes and in taking appropriate actions to help mitigate a larger-than-normal tax increase or a higher withdrawal from the fund balance. However, the requested $5,000 represents 0.007% of the total budget. This money is critical to the continued improvements being made at the museum. The 'self-help,' quote-unquote, being done by members and not contractors, renovation of the milk cheese room, and with the addition of a handicap ramp will allow us to keep moving forward. It is also important that we received a commitment from a member that he will match the town's contributions dollar-for-dollar, so the $5,000 represents $10,000 to the museum. Please reconsider the zeroing out of our requested funds and reinstate to the requested $5,000." Thank you. That is letter one. Now, I should also say, and I forgot to earlier, that we do have some weather coming through, and if we have any power or internet interruptions, we will do our best to restart the meeting as quickly as possible. But as we're all learning this together, please bear with us and hope that we don't have that much weather come through here. Second letter I have is from David Snedeker. No address given. To Stonington here, "I am writing in support of funding for the three libraries under the Department of Human Services Outside Agencies in the proposed Stonington budget." Next letter we received is from Roberta Donahue at 11 Washington Street in Mystic. And she writes, "I'm writing in support of funding for the three libraries under the Department of Human Services and Outside Agencies for the proposed 2020/2021 Stonington Next letter is from Bruce Carpenter of 108 Cove Road in Stonington. And he writes, "I urge the Stonington Board of Finance to support the three libraries' budget requests in the Human Services Outside Agencies area. Mystic and No Inc., Stonington Free, and Westerly Libraries provide essential health, educational information, recreational materials, and programs for Stonington citizens of all ages at no cost to the user. The library services are well-liked and used by many people. Our libraries provide free meeting and program space to their patrons and other community organizations, which brings the community together. The three libraries' combined resources are necessary to meet Connecticut's minimum recommendations for library services. One library cannot support the space, program, and materials required for the town, local, for the town. Local libraries in Pawtucket, Stonington Borough, and Mystic are also desired by the citizens. The Connecticut State Library 2020 Best Practices provide library guidelines for library services. State recommendations indicate that our libraries provide sound, but not extravagant, services to the community. Libraries are nonprofit and raise funds for most of their operating budgets. Mystic and No Inc. Libraries raise about 70% of its yearly budget and receives about 30% from the town budgets. Our libraries are bargains. 2019 Connecticut State Library report states that the average public library receives 86.5% of its funds from its municipality. A review of the spreadsheets indicate that Stonington is well-served by the Mystic and No Inc., Stonington Free, and Westerly Libraries. Please support the library's budget requests." The next letter we received was from Philip Kepper at 186 Jerry Brown Road, Mystic, Connecticut. And he writes, "I am writing concerning funding for libraries, in particular the Mystic-No Inc. Library, where I have had the privilege of working for the past 12 years. I am still amazed, in this age of internet, at how daily-used the library is by a host of patrons, the majority of them patrons that have been coming to the library for years. A number of them have been using the library since they were in primary school, and they do not fail to mention that. Now with COVID-19 ruling our lives, the library has become even more vital, virtually, for people who are literally shut in. We have a variety of programs for them to log into, and real-time information at their fingertips. For me personally, I've had the most fun reading a book, Jambury, that was videotaped at the library for children and their parents to access. The library is helping parents teach and entertain their children at home, not a small task. So I'm asking you to keep in mind the libraries at the budget hearings. I can't imagine money better spent. When you pause to think about it, we are carrying on one aspect of the tradition Noah Webster began with his speller in 1783, to educate the public to communicate with one another. I think that rather profound." Next letter we received is from Peggy Brissette at 192 Farm Home Road, Stonington. She writes, "I'm writing in support of the funding to our three critically-important libraries, namely the Mystic and No Inc. Library, the Stonington Free Library, and the Westerly Public Library. Though currently closed as buildings, they are all open as a virtual space to reach as many people as possible, providing links to reputable sources of information." Reputable is emphasized in the letter. Each library is offering access to a variety of online services that might include access to materials such as ebooks and audiobooks, and video streaming services, storytimes, and tech tutorials, featuring familiar library faces, and remote tech assistance, and more. Libraries were meant to be an essential link to the U.S. Census, offering access to computers and help to those who don't own one. When our libraries are again open, they will resume being valuable community centers providing access to computers, materials, and people. Each of the three libraries provides services to Stonington residents, and all are essential to our residents. Library cards have been deemed as important as social security cards to some, and provide access to the world for all residents regardless of any type of defining terms, such as age, income level, educational status, or interests. I would ask that you consider maintaining funds to all three libraries as you struggle to put together a budget during this stressful time. When we emerge, libraries will be more important than ever." The next letter we received was duly-wrote in by Belinda Decay, Director of the Stonington Free Library, and Michaela Hall, Assistant Director. And they write, firstly, Stonington Free Library thanks to Board of Finance and Board of Selectmen for the funding, particularly now when the effects of COVID-19 pandemic create an enormous financial burden for nonprofits, businesses, and municipalities alike. Libraries have never been more vitally important to the community than at this moment of crisis. They mitigate social isolation, offer a safe online perspective, and provide access to reliable information on health and safety, public services, educational resources, and so much more. Our physical doors are temporarily closed, but we continue to provide services across all of Stonington. New initiatives include laptop loans to human services so staff can work remotely, group meetings of adults with disabilities, and virtual book groups via Zoom, remote one-on-one tech help sessions, help for patrons accessing ebooks, audiobooks, and YouTube videos of our programs, access to online resources for parents and families, supporting remote education, entertainment, cultural resources, and more, and daily storytime for children. The familiar face and voice of our children's librarian gives great comfort. We are also planning for when our doors open again, you're already familiar with our current usage statistics, and the proposed funding would help to pay increases for our hours of operation from 43 to 48, closer to 56, recommended by Connecticut State Library for our population. Once the immediate effects of COVID-19 have passed, reliance on the programs and services provided by Stonington Free Library will only increase in the weeks and months ahead. We aim to be available to provide our community with the resources they will need as we get back on our feet, whether it be provision of Wi-Fi and computer access, assistance with applying for grants, for jobs, or government benefits, technology, or resume-writing workshops, or simply a welcoming place together." The next letter we received is from Sally Solanci, sorry, Sally, got your last name totally wrong, President of the Friends of Mystic and No Inc. Library, 23 Hinckley Street, Mystic. And she writes, "My husband and I live on the Stonington side of Mystic, so we mostly use Mystic and No Inc. Library. It offers free access to a large collection of books, magazines, newspapers, CDs, DVDs, puzzles, and online programs for adults and children. There are six computers for public use, and the library offers free training on all the latest technology, including patrons' own devices. When the library is closed, patrons with internet access can check out books in the Overdrive collection and enjoy the films in Canopy. With all the training and technology available, the library helps, quote, 'level the playing field,' unquote. Mystic and No Inc. Library is open year-round except for in these unfortunate times. Besides offering a quiet space for reading, writing, and working at a computer, it is also a great place for learning English, or knitting, or practicing chair yoga, attending a bereavement session, or listening to candidates for public office explain their ideas. It even has a large collection of museum passes, which provide free or discounted entrance to museums and nature centers in Connecticut and Rhode Island. For all that Mystic and No Inc. Library offers, especially in this difficult, especially in these difficult times, it needs an increase for its funding." And the final letter we received for this section is from Sarah Lathrop, 7 Osprey Lane, Mystic, Connecticut. And she writes, "This letter is written to support the funding to Mystic and No Inc. Library for the financial year 2021, as recommended by the Stonington Board of Finance. The library's operating budget for financial year 2021 is projected at $790,000. Stonington's portion would be 15% of the total. We are also requesting $152,000 from Groton. Combined requests are 1/3 of the funds required to maintain the library. 42% of the library's cardholders are Stonington residents; 58% live in Groton. Balance will come from fundraising activities, directed gifts, grants, and withdrawals from the library's endowment fund. Our 2020/2021 initiatives include the installation of high-speed fiber-optic internet line, upgrading our aging computer and tech equipment, and several building projects, notably the repair of our 126-year-old chimney. These initiatives are largely funded by our supporters through appeals and donations, as well as grants. We feel a strong sense of responsibility to uphold the Mystic-No Inc. Library began over 126 years ago. The library is closed to the public during the COVID-19 quarantine, however, our librarians are still at work providing services to the community through innovative programs. Just some of them are: a self-serve library at the library entrance, the brand-new Mystic-No Inc. Library YouTube channel offering tech tutorials, children's storytimes, crafting projects, and more; Canopy, a free video streaming service for films and documentaries; Overdrive, a free service to borrow digital and audiobooks online; remote tech support from our technology librarian. These are some of the ways Mystic-No Inc. Library is reaching out to support the community. Your support of the library's vital services is crucial." And that finishes the Human Services Outside Agencies, part of the budget comments. Next letter that we received is relative to the Police Department. This one was written by Marilyn Creighton of 14 Dennison Avenue, Mystic, Connecticut. And she writes, "There is an urgent need for an air-conditioned vehicle for animal control at a proposed cost of $50,000 per Board of Finance report. Animals picked up by the ACO must suffer greatly in the back of the hot metal truck in the warmer/hotter months. I'm writing to remind you that there remains $17,000 of $25,000 in the Ellis-Zimbro Fund for the animals managed by the Police Department. This would bring the needed funds from the town budget to $33,000. Plus, there would be an added savings from the trade-in vehicle of the, trade-in value of the old truck. The use of the $17,000-plus potential trade value could reduce the cost of a new vehicle by more than 40%. I am looking into other avenues to further decrease the cost to the town for a new vehicle. Please let me know if this idea can be presented at an upcoming Police Commissioners meeting. Thank you and the entire Police Department for your great service to the town of Stonington and for all its residents, two and four-legged." The next section where we received public comment is the SIP projects related to public works engineering. The first letter we received was from a group of people. They are Marcel Dufresne of 6 North Stonington Road, Beth Dufresne of 6 North Stonington Road, Trish LaPointe of 4 North Stonington Road, Joel Bergeron of 4 North Stonington Road, Leslie Dwyer of 13 North Stonington Road, Joan Cohen, and Michael Spelman of 2 North Stonington Road. And they write, Marcel Dufresne, a Groton resident and Stonington taxpayer, is author of this letter. It represents the views of the undersigned residents of North Stonington Road from both towns most affected by the bridge closure. We strongly urge the Stonington Finance Committee to restore funding to repair the North Stonington Road Bridge. We have delivered to Stonington 160 signatures of residents from Old Mystic, more than half from the Stonington side, urging officials from both towns to finally get this project done. By now interested parties are very familiar with the various concerns caused by the bridge closure, especially public safety issues. Old Mystic Fire Chief Ken Richards has worked every year to garner support from both towns. He has well-articulated the fire safety concerns, most notably the risk of delayed response times due to trucks having to navigate a three-way intersection at the center of the village near the post office and general store. Those of us who live in Old Mystic believe these concerns are very real and pressing, and we applaud the chief's persistence in pushing for the bridge repair. In 2016, after Groton decided not to fund the project while Stonington did, attorneys for the Old Mystic Fire Department, Fire District warned Groton that the closed bridge perpetuates a potentially life-threatening hazard to the citizens of the town of Groton. Similar letter was sent this year with copies to Stonington. The 2016 letter noted the town of Stonington is committed to the replacement of the bridge. Those life-threatening dangers have not disappeared. Why has Stonington support? We are well aware of the financial uncertainties facing both towns this year, and while we would prefer that the funds be restored this year, we are especially concerned that Stonington has included $15,000 in its budget to, quote, "close," unquote, the bridge. No one has explained what closing this bridge means, and we urge the town not to take steps that would preclude the bridge from being repaired and reopened in the future when finances are more stable and the two towns can work together." The next letter we have is from Carl Strand, President of the Old Mystic Fire District. And he writes, "Dear Members of the Board of Finance, it is now 10 years since the North Stonington Road Bridge was washed out in the flood of March 2010. At that time, the towns did not undertake, did not take advantage of the help from FEMA to replace the bridge. Since then until this year, funding to repair and replace the bridge has been consistently, has been consistently part of the town's capital improvement budget. We thank you for that. The Old Mystic Fire District, our attorney, and our fire chief have been consistently and persistently bringing the public safety issue of this bridge closure to the towns of Groton and Stonington ever since the bridge closed. Both towns and the Fire District have been fortunate during the past 10 years that we have had no serious structure fires, nor medical emergencies occurring in the areas immediately affected by the bridge closure. We also have been fortunate that due to the diligence of our fire personnel, we have not had a serious traffic accident at the intersection of Main Street and Route 27. All this is to say that good fortune is not a substitute for addressing a public safety situation. It boggles my mind that our town government can push aside the clearly documented problem of public safety presented by the senior fire chief of the town and by the senior Fire District Executive of the town. The money involved is a very small fraction of the town's budget. I once again implore you to keep this item in the 2020 budget." The next letter we have received is from Chief Ken Richards of the Old Mystic Fire District. And he writes, "Dear Members of the Board, first and foremost, thank you for supporting the funding of the North Stonington Road Bridge over the last nine years. I wholly understand that you have many projects in the town that must be completed with a limited budget. That being said, I cannot emphasize enough my frustration in regarding to how this entire project has been handled. As a fire chief, my first responsibility is always the safety of the community and the members of the Old Mystic Fire District. The delay in replacing this bridge over the past 10 years has put both the community and the members of the Fire District at risk for savings that amounts to less than 1% of the overall budget in both towns. I am gravely concerned about anyone experiencing a major life-changing incident because the bridge is out of service, as you should be. Legal counsel for the Old Mystic Fire District drafted two letters to both towns, making them aware of this public safety issue. It is with the utmost urgency that I ask you once again to restore the funding to replace the bridge in your budget this year. This project is essential for the safety of our community, and 130-plus signatures on the petition to replace the bridge says that the residents of the community agree." And the final letter about this is from Michelle and Ken Peters of 1170 River Road, Mystic, Connecticut. And they write, "We are asking the town of Stonington to fund the repair of the North Stonington Road Bridge in the town's 2020/2021 budget. Brian K. Esteb, legal counsel for the Old Mystic Fire District, wrote a letter on February 12, 2020, to John Burt, town manager, and the town of Groton, and the other town of Groton officials, and included Danielle Cheeseborough, First Selectman of the town of Stonington, on distribution. In this letter, he stated that, quote, "The continued delay in replacement of the bridge perpetuates a potentially life-threatening hazard to the citizens of the town of Groton." We think that this letter provides notice that the loss of life or a home due to the lack of response time by the Old Mystic Fire Department, as a result of the North Stonington Road Bridge not being operable, puts both the towns of Stonington and Groton in a tenuous position legally. We have also written a letter to the town of Groton's officials, who will be holding their RTM meeting on April 3, 2020. Both towns must work together and open lines of communication to get this bridge repair accomplished as soon as possible, as lives depend on it. This cannot be an economic decision. We have attached letters that have been written by the Old Mystic Fire District Chief, Ken Richards Jr., and the legal counsel for the Old Mystic Fire District, Brian Esteb. These letters express their concern and recommendation about the North Stonington Road Bridge. These are the experts, so we must listen to them. We understand that these are difficult times, that the town budget is stretching, but you cannot put a price tag on human life. We are asking that the funds to repair a North Stonington Road Bridge be in this year's Stonington budget to protect citizens and their homes." The next, the final letter that we received is regarding the Planning Department SIP allocation. This is from Rick Newton, Chair of the Climate Challenge, Climate Change Task Force. And he writes, "First, let me say thank you for your service to the community. I know that this budget cycle is especially difficult with the unknowns due to the current pandemic affecting the entire world. I don't expect the Board of Finance to be restoring additional funding to the 2021 budget, so my comments are more general nature for future budget cycles." And then he quotes the community vulnerability from the Town of Stonington Coastal Resiliency Plan, continues on, "If you think that the current COVID-19 business environment is going to be difficult, this cartoon, which is shown..." I know that this budget cycle is especially difficult with the unknowns due to the current pandemic affecting the entire world. I don't expect the Board of Finance to be restoring additional funding to the 2021 budget, so my comments are more general nature for future budget cycles." And then he quotes the community vulnerability from the Town of Stonington Coastal Resiliency Plan. Continues on, "If you think that the current COVID-19 business environment is going to be difficult, this cartoon, which is shown, shows relative magnitude that climate change and sea-level rise will have on future generations of Stonington residents. The town needs to think far beyond a typical five-year time horizon with regards to climate change. Southeastern Connecticut and Southern Rhode Island have already exceeded the 2 degrees temperature change needed to keep sea-level rise in check, and every month the statistics are worse. Roads and bridges are going to need to be raised. Significant town infrastructure is going to have to be waterproofed, razed or relocated. Residents are going to have to relocate. Studies have shown that for every $1 spent now on coastal resilience, $6 in future expenditures will be avoided. Regarding specific line items, SIP Budget Line 87 Climate Change Adaptation and Mitigation Program cut $100,000 to $10,000. There are at least two grant programs that the town does not take advantage of: NFWF Coastal Resilience Grants and NFWF Long Island Sound Future Fund Grants. Both require matching contributions. Had the $100,000 been retained, the town could have applied for a grant of approximately $250,000 under the Coastal Resiliency Grant Program that could have been used for an engineering study for replacement of the Mason's Island causeway. This project is the number-one priority in the CRP and has been listed in several versions of the town's hazardous mitigation plan as an item of concern. SIP Budget Line 119 Contribution to the Open Space Acquisition Fund reduced to $1. Town's Plan of Conservation and Development shows that preservation of open space is a high priority for residents. Line item number nine of the HMP states, quote, "Pursue the acquisition and demolition of flood-prone properties to conservation of open space," unquote, and is shown as a high priority for the community. There is also grant funding available for this activity, also requiring matching contributions. Preservation of open space in the coastal zone is a large factor in the calculation for discounts to the flood insurance program. Above two line items are examples of where the town is losing out on its grant funding due to lack of matching funds being allocated in the town's budget." And that concludes the letters that we have received as public comment. As in past years, it is a public comment. It is not meant as a dialogue with the public. So we will take all of these letters, we'll enter them in for the record. The next meeting that the Board of Finance will have relative to the budget will be April 29th for the last deliberations and take into account the public input that was received today and review everything there. As I mentioned earlier, the Board of Selectmen, and the Town Hall really, with the leadership of Danielle and the Board of Education have already come back with additional cuts to their budget requests that we'll be also hearing at that time. And we will go from there. Being that there is no other feedback that we are receiving from online or from the letters, we will now adjourn this meeting of the, or this public hearing. Thank you all for attending and stay safe out there.